We expect our. I will read the opening statement then. Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand and twenty-three through January two thousand and twenty-four. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, www.pristinnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and the Times and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January twenty, excuse me, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please note this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We'll have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. An appropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, would you call the roll, please? Carrie? My freeze, my screen frozen or something? It's hard to, I'm actually seeing people move, so I don't think it's me. Carrie, if you can hear me, we need a roll call, and if Carrie's not available, maybe Justin, you can do it?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I'll begin. Ms. Capizoli?
I'm back now, so I got as, oh, I got as far as Mr. McGowan. Thank you.
Carrie, we did not hear any of your roll calls.
Any of it? Okay, I'll go real fast. Hope for that connection. Ms. Capizoli? Mr. Chow? Mr. Cohen? Mr. McGowan?
Here, still here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Bodikheimer? Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Okay. Uh, thank you. So, um, announcements. Uh, we could start with, with Mr. Lesko's, um, uh, regular announcement regarding master plan work?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have three announcements, uh, tonight. Um, the first one is, uh, in regards to the master plan survey uh, that's out right now. This is our, uh, second community visioning survey as part of the master plan rewrite. Uh, third survey overall, and it'll be our final one. Uh, this one's open until Sunday night, the eighteenth. Uh, so please get it in if you haven't done so already. It takes about five minutes. Um, we've had over eleven hundred responses so far. Uh, it can be translated to Spanish and other languages using the Google Translate icon. And most importantly, it can be found at engaged.pristinmasterplan.org. Uh, that's the engagement hub link, and then it's just right there at the top. So again, uh, master plan survey is open until this Sunday night, and it's at engaged.pristinmasterplan.org. Uh, next up, uh, there is a Community Park South master plan going on, not to be confused with the overall municipal master plan. Uh, it's more about how the fields and the parking and all that will look at Community Park South. Uh, there was a public engagement meeting last Thursday, which resulted in four concepts, uh, to comment on and provide information on. Uh, there's info at princetonnj.gov right on the top. You'll see an alert, uh, and you could follow, uh, that to see the four concepts to provide comments. Uh, there are also boards with those in the lobby at four hundred Witherspoon, and there's a deadline of the twenty-sixth to comment on that. And I see Council President, uh, Sacks' hand is up.
Uh-huh, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify something, Justin, that came to my attention right before this meeting. Um, I, I guess there was an impression by some, some members of the public that those four concept plans are set in stone and that it's only one of those four options. Um, very rarely is anything ever set in stone in Princeton until it is set in Princeton. So those concept plans are not set in stone. They're ideas of directions we might want to go in. From a general concept standpoint, but, um, I, I didn't know if it was one of the consultants or, or someone had, uh, communicated to the public that they had to choose between one of those four options, and that is not actually the case. So I just, for those who, um, which seem to be, uh, not insignificant swath of the public who thought that they had to choose squarely within those four options, that is not the case. I wanted to disabuse people of that notion, and this seemed like a good opportunity, so that's it.
Good.
Thank you for joining us. And then the third one is somewhat similar. Um, there is a Nassau Street Streetscape redesign process going on right now. Uh, there was an open house last night at the library with a very good turnout. Um, and materials from that open house will be posted online on the municipal website. Um, and there will be another opportunity to provide input, uh, when seeing those materials, and this is really, um, about things that we could do on Nassau Street, both in the street and on the sidewalk. Uh, you'll see materials, benches, things like that, uh, potential bike lanes. And then the hope is that a concept from that will go to council by the end of July, so just wanted to make the Planning Board aware of that. Um, check out, uh, princetonnj.gov if you want to participate in those two, uh, initiatives going on right now, as well as the master plan survey.
Great. Other announcements from Planning Board members or staff? Or professionals? Not seeing any, so, um, subcommittee reports, have we any of those this evening? Don't see any either. So let's go on to minutes.
Madam Chair.
Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Uh, I could chime in here. Um, there was a meeting of the Site Plan Subcommittee of the Planning Board two weeks ago. Uh, that's actually, uh, in regards to two cases that you'll hear tonight. Both were classified as minor site plans as they were, uh, uh, applied for.
Okay, great. Thank you. Minutes, we have two sets of minutes, both from regular meetings. The first set from January fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any edits or suggestions relative to those minutes? And if not, would someone like to move them?
So moved.
I'm so moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. McGowan, seconded by Mr. Taylor. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And the next set of minutes, uh, is from January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Any suggestions, edits, issues? And if none, would someone like to move those minutes?
I'll move the minutes.
Thanks, Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by.
I'll second.
Bye, Mr. Quinn. Thank you both. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Um, next we have a findings of fact, a resolution about two seventeen Witherspoon Street. This was, um, this is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances at two seventeen Witherspoon Block twenty-one point zero four lot three. File number P twenty-two twenty-two dash two four four P. I believe that this, uh, well, we got, I guess, two versions of this, uh, one with some clarification or correction um, that Martina provided at, I believe, Mr. Cohen's suggestion, and that were, that was distributed just a couple of days ago. Any further issues or any comments about that resolution?
Yeah. Excuse me, I have something. You know, at the last session, I was tasked with basically editing, uh, and just tightening up some, uh, um, grammatical errors more than anything else, and addressing David's concern about, um, could the building park coverage now with the condition with respect to setbacks be less than, um, thirty percent? And Martina had back and forth with the attorney for two seventeen and came up with language which was acceptable to David, and, um, which you commented on it that says, "The applicant agreed his condition of, uh, the board granting variances five and six to revise the design so that the principal exterior walls of the new units may decide your setbacks." Then that number is expected to change, though still be above thirty percent. And there's a bunch of, you know, minor corrections elsewhere. But the, the final version that was circulated with a note revised six twelve did not include the key language about, "Though still be above thirty percent," and that's on page eighteen of the, uh, copy which is marked revised June twelfth. So if we can add that back in, then that would take care of that.
So add in the language that you just read aloud?
Yeah, "Though still be above thirty percent," and that would be on page eighteen about at least, uh, as mine printed out, seven lines from the bottom after that number is expected to change.
Okay. Um, and we just trust that you'll communicate that specifically to Carrie?
Yes.
I mean, we can, we can, um, we can adopt those minutes tonight with that clarification, um, but I just want to make sure that it's.
I had the information. I'm, I'm sorry. I thought it was included. I'll make sure it is included.
Okay.
Good, great, Carrie.
Someone like to move those minutes?
The resolution, actually.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, pardon me. The resolution?
I move the resolution, including the amendments that Mr. Mulder just suggested.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by.
I'll second.
Sorry, is an alternate allowed to make a motion on, uh, the first motion on a resolution? I know they can do a second, but.
No, they can do a first if they were, yes.
Very good. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, no. Okay.
Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. I saw his hand first.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please, Carrie.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have a, um, presentation and, and, uh, discussion, uh, regarding capital projects. Um, a review offered up by Deanna Stockton. I know I've been looking forward to this. I'm sure others have as well. So, uh, Deanna, or Mr. Lesko, do you have anything to say first, or should we spring right over to our municipal engineer? Welcome, Deanna. It's great to have you here.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for having me tonight. I'm here to speak to you about, uh, the two thousand and twenty-three Capital Improvement Program. As many of you are aware, council approved the capital program at their Monday night meeting this week. Within the capital budget this year, uh, I'll be reviewing the sanitary sewer improvements, work that will be done by Public Works as well as, um, improvements proposed through the engineering group. Uh, so first, starting with sanitary sewer projects. Our sewer engineer and his team are looking at four different, um, major projects for sanitary sewer. The first of those projects is a replacement, um, and or repair of eight of nine pump stations that we have in Princeton for sanitary sewer. We show here on the map that these, these pump stations are scattered throughout town. Uh, and they, uh, there will also be one pump station, the Rosedale Pump Station, which will be upgraded with a new control system. We have completed a basis of design report for the pump station project. The next phase is to move into design plans. We're currently estimating that the pump station replacements will be around ten million dollars. Uh, what you see here on the screen is a concept plan for the pump station. Uh, we have four of our pump stations are located in floodplain areas, flood prone areas. And, uh, so one of the climate resiliency actions that we're taking for the design and replacement project is to elevate those critical components outside of the floodplain. That's why you see that these, uh, stations are elevated with, uh, a concrete structure below. Uh, the, up on top of the platform will be the critical controls, the, uh, generators and, uh, and those types of features. So as noted on here, we're also looking to provide natural gas backup generates. Generators in the past, we've only had uh, diesel generators either, uh, permanently on a site or, uh, brought in on a trailer. So the natural gas setup will give us that, uh, consistent operation during any event. And then also related to, um, environmental and sustainability upgrades is, uh, the use of an aeration bubbler system. In the past, we have used a chemical feed system. That was one of the options that we've looked at, but we are upgrading, uh, to this aeration bubbler system. So, um, that is that project. Another big component of the sanitary sewer improvement program is to, uh, address the I N I that we have within the system, and I'll jump forward just so you see. If my slideshow will let me. So I N I is inflown infiltration. This is where groundwater and stormwater is able to, uh, penetrate into our sanitary sewer system through leaks, uh, displaced joints, cracks in the pipe, um, illicit connections as well. So we have, um, a big focus on this to remove that I N I because we don't want to continuously treat clean water. It's estimated in our sanitary system that we've got, uh, sixty percent of our flow is actually clean water rather than, than sewer water, dirty water.
Oh, sixty percent.
It's very high.
That is really something. Um, Mr. Texarney had his hand up. Zenon, do you have a quick question for Deanna?
Um, yeah, well, sorry. Yeah, I didn't want to interrupt the flow, and that's why I put my hand back down. But, um, I was just wondering if, uh, the municipality was looking at using, uh, variable frequency drives for the pump stations? Those, um, oftentimes are a little bit more energy efficient.
Yes, we are looking at that.
Okay, great. And yeah, I mean, uh, I think that, uh, the Clean Energy Program actually does offer, um, kind of help uh, with, uh, energy efficiency measures with, uh, pump stations and water infrastructure.
Okay, thanks. You all take note of that. We are looking, um, to utilize the infrastructure bank to help offset the cost of these projects and, and, um, get low interest loans.
Okay.
So in terms of our major I N I projects that we're working on, um, with any of our road projects, we do incorporate sewer repairs. So it's noted here that that will be a part of Witherspoon Phase Three, which will be constructed next year. Uh, also, we have a project on Hamilton Avenue where, uh, we have, as you can see in the picture, some issues with, with the sanitary sewer. And, um, looking ahead, we're hoping to have a corresponding road project on Hamilton to start implementing some of the improvements that were, uh, approved or recommended in the Hamilton Wiggins Robeson Corridor study that was completed a few years back, so, uh, this will actually help us kickstart the underground work in that region. So with our I N I projects, just so you see that the bottom slide is, instead of the uh, slip lining and bursting projects that we've done in the past for I N I improvements, we'll be using a chemical routing system. And, uh, this is just a much more targeted approach where we have an existing sanitary sewer pipe that is structurally sound except for the joints or other cracks. So it were, we're able to reduce the materials that are needed, uh, for the sewer projects. Moving on, uh, the last project this year for the Sewer Department is to replace their, uh, base of operations at a River Road. They currently are in an undersized and not very good trailer, so they will be looking to replace the trailer and bring it, bring it in as a, a little bit larger size so that they can accommodate future staffing needs. Moving on to Public Works, uh, there's also additional work at River Road that will be going on this year. Uh, we'll continue with some site repairs and wetland mitigation. There will be repairs made to the old landfill. And we'll also be resuming a project to look at all of the environmental constraints at River Road and determine what we can do to utilize that property more fully in the future. Uh, probably five or more years ago, council approved placing a, um, vehicle storage facility out here at River Road. It's planned to be about a thirty thousand square foot building to hold equipment that's off-season. As Justin finishes with H two M on the facility study, it's very likely that there could be more uses that are proposed to utilize the River Road site. Um, so we are looking to get an overall sense of how much space is actually available for future development out at River Road for municipal operations. Um, so those are the, the activities with Public Works this year. Uh, moving on to engineering, we have quite a list of engineering projects that are already underway. Um, and so this year we move, the, the capital funding is actually for construction dollars uh, for all of the items except Nassau Streetscape. Uh, so I'll go through one, all of these items one by one. Uh, Witherspoon Street Phase Three, this will be almost the last project of the Witherspoon Street Corridor Improvement. Uh, we're in the design phase of the section from Lee Avenue to Valley Road. Um, and in this whole design process that we've gone through, we're using, we're we're using the ideas of complete and green streets as well as safe system approaches. Safe system is where you look to prevent crashes from happening and minimize harm that can be caused when those crashes do occur. So this is, this is kind of the latest and greatest design approach, uh, that, that's out for local roads as well as all the way up to, uh, federal highway. Also, when we're looking at our projects, we review the bike master plan, the sidewalk master plan, and any other suggested roadway improvements that are contained within the master plan. So in this case, uh, the bike master plan showed that, uh, it's recommended for enhanced shared shared lane markings as well as a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at Geo Crosswalk and a roundabout at Valley Road. So as a subset to our Witherspoon Street Design Project, we've taken the intersection of Alliant Witherspoon and, and separated out as a separate project because of this idea of the roundabout and, and how to deal with the traffic signal. Because it has quite a bit more, uh, involvement and, and considerations needed, so we will be moving that, that community discussion forward, but it, but it is separated from the road project. Uh, so in this road project, we're continuing with the, I'm sorry, with the twenty mile an hour speed limit, uh, which allows us to design the road with a twenty-five mile an hour design speed. Uh, we continue with reduced lane width, reduced roadway width. You'll see, you see on the image, we've actually narrowed the roadway and brought the curves in slightly. At Geo, instead of having a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, at this time, we're recommending a raised crosswalk um, with curb extensions. This will help for traffic calming in addition to increasing the visibility of pedestrians and bicyclists, which I think is the point of having that rectangular rapid flashing beacon. Um, and, and because we do have the lower speed limit as well from when the bike master plan was envisioned, this is the, the treatment that we're recommending instead. We will have the enhanced bike markings and we are widening sidewalks, so that we've, uh, the, the new standard sidewalk width in Princeton is five feet wherever possible. In existing situations, we are replacing the existing four-foot wide sidewalks with five-foot in Witherspoon Street Phase Three because we do have the, the elementary school within the project limits. And you have very young children that may be biking to school. We've actually widened the sidewalk between actually, in front of the municipal building, it was already six feet, but it'll be six feet from, um, Henry Avenue to, um, the municipal complex, and this, um, we think this is a great idea because it will allow multiple users on that sidewalk during those busy school hours. We've also incorporated decorative sidewalk treatments in to, to delineate the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood. The sidewalk treatments have, have, um, evolved through the different freight phases. In Witherspoon Street Phase One, we have the paper sidewalk completely. Um, as we moved across Paul Robeson into the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District, uh, the materials changed to con- concrete with a border of the same pavers that we had in Phase One. And that will continue to, uh, two limits on, uh, the sidewalk that the Historic Preservation Subcommittee has assisted us in, in delineating in the project. So north of the Witherspoon Jackson District, that will change back to just concrete. Um, we're also planning for a rain garden installation in front of the municipal parking lot as part of this project. Uh, we will be enhancing the tree planting along the corridor. We'll have a variety of tree species uh, that the shade tree committee and the arborist have helped, helped us identify. It will be smaller ornamental trees under the utility wires and larger shade trees, um, where we don't have the overhead wires constraining, uh, the height of trees. We'll also be continuing the pedestrian, pedestrian scale lighting through the corridor and, uh, doing some improvements at the firehouse with pavement markings and as well as replacing their signal that, uh, has stopped working. So this is a section, just so you're aware, and closer So this is a section, just so you're aware, and closer to in front of the school. And that's why the sidewalk is showing outside of the right of way. Uh this would be in the vicinity where we have the cur- the bus pullout in front of Community Park South, uh Community Park Elementary School. Um so that's what you're seeing here. Moving on, our next uh another project we're working on is a project on Dickinson University Place and Alexander Street. Everything north of the roundabout. Uh so again, we looked at the master plan and what what is needed. We are looking to um implement the enhanced sharrows on university in accordance with the master plan. Uh we're also working with the university at the intersection of College Road and university to uh take back some of the um impervious areas. Uh we have this plan that the Dan Casey from the university provided where we're looking at tightening up the curb radius to shorten crossing distance. And then um instead of concrete in this corner area, replacing that with more planting as well as on the university uh on this eastern side of the intersection.
That's great. Um just for um for everybody's information, this is the intersection right next to McCarter. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thanks.
Um so moving on, we have a shared use pathway project on Cherry Hill. This will extend the shared use pathway from Fule up to Crestview. Um and we're looking to have it be widened anywhere from eight to ten feet depending on uh the conditions that we encounter. It is it is going to be tight with right of way. We will have to get right of way easements and build walls if you're familiar with this corridor. Um but the idea is to provide a separation between the road curbing and where the pathway is anywhere from two to five feet. And um if needed, per the design standards, there may be included a split rail fence, so um this is hopefully the first of many projects to keep extending this shared use pathway to the north and ultimately to Cherry Valley. Uh but we're excited. We were able to get grant funds to help offset a lot of the cost of this project. Um next on our plate is Turfion Road. Um I'm sure all of you have seen this plan before in some version related to the Turfion Development. And um so we are undertaking a project in coordination with um the development projects that have occurred out here with Santa and Turfion to uh again, start installing some of the master plan improvements such as bike lanes. Uh the developments on this side of the roadway will be putting in sidewalk, will be extending it to Broer Avenue. Uh so that we will have pedestrian facilities on both sides of um Turfion Road from Harrison to Grover. And the idea is that we would continue sidewalks east um on the south, on the south side of the road. And we would also look uh on the other side of Harrison Street to make some sidewalk connections on Turfion Road towards Walnut uh to better facilitate walking and biking to the schools. Um we will also be replanting the corridor. Another big feature here from a trapping traffic calming standpoint are uh these diverder islands, which will have pedestrian refuges and a speed table. Uh a year or two ago could be longer, council reduced the speed limit on Turfion Road to twenty-five miles an hour in the stretch. So a- again, this is another feature to help us uh keep speeds where they should be. Uh another improvement project related to bicycles and pedestrians uh are the installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons at uh Route two oh six in Mans Grove as well as at Route two oh six and Herentown Road. Both of these projects will also most likely require some right of way easements. And um they're in design. It's actually a little slow right now because they are looking at that uh that piece of the project of what type of easements do we need uh along Route two oh six. And as
Can you just uh explain what are, what what does R R F B stand for, just for?
Yep.
My
So rectangular rapid flashing beacons, we already have, we have two of them on Route two oh six already.
Yep.
And um we did have one on Witherspoon Street, but that was removed when we upgraded the crossings um with Phase One.
Yeah.
So it person will push a button.
Yeah.
The lights will flash and that will alert drivers to uh who stop for the pedestrians.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep. And as mentioned in um Justin's update earlier, we did, we had an open house yesterday for Nassau Streetscape improvements. Uh back in twenty eighteen, council had accepted a design guideline report for the Withers- or the Nassau Street Corridor from Baird Lane to Moore Street. Um in the process of impl- implementation, um there was some challenges with some of the materials that were specified in those guidelines and um we are taking a fresh look at it now. Uh we have a company in named Arterial that is doing this for us. I put in a couple of slides that just show some of the ideas. So they're looking at sidewalk materials and the design. Um street furnishings, including the benches, uh what to do at tree wells, crash cans, that type of thing. So you can see they're really looking to um green up the area as well with some landscaping as well as the tree improvements. Um and another component of what they're looking at is how can we better incorporate bicycles in this area? That was one thing through the Bike Master Plan that uh we really didn't come up with a really strong final plan or proposal for providing facilities for bicyclists on Nassau Street. So uh Arterial has looked at this plan of creating a cycle track, a two-way cycle track on the town side. Um so the curb that you see on the right side of the cycle track, that would actually be the existing curb um as it stands now. And in the section from Washington Van De Vender towards Palmer Square, we do have a wider roadway cross-section and you know, we have two lanes that go in one direction. We've got a very wide uh lane going in the uh southbound direction. So the idea is is that we better consolidate that vehicle movement, so it's one lane in each direction and use the extra space to create a cycle track. Um this plan has not gone to DOT. They have not seen it. Uh it's definitely subject to their review and approval because it is their right of way. Uh but but this is one idea, uh the latest idea of how to provide cycling options for our uh residents and visitors. And that's it. Any questions?
I expect there will be. I just want to jump in and say, this is so great to see. I mean, there are some really, really great improvements in the works and you know, the focus on pedestrian safety and access and um I mean, it's just, it's just terrific to see. I know it represents a ton of work um on your part and that of your staff, so thank and council, so.
And council, definitely.
Yeah, um Mr. Tex Ernie.
Yeah, like the second that a lot of uh great projects and great work being done. Um so uh I I uh since we left off on on the um Nassau Street um this free scape and and particularly the psycho track, I I figured I'd bring this up since I went to the session yesterday and I brought this up there and um I wanted to, I brought up to the consultants, but I just wanted to bring it up to you, but um the bike lane, I guess, right now as being proposed would only be from Van De Venter to two oh six. And so um I I kind of asked the consultant to to look at, you know, how the bike lane can be continued all the way to Harrison Street. Um I don't know if that is part of the scope, but I I really do think that, you know, we need to think about like the continuity of the bike line, so that way, you know, it doesn't just end abruptly. Um because that can, that can potentially lead to confusion and and a dangerous situation for bicycle, bicyclists. Um and but I I do think that um um the 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 cycle track is a great idea. I mean, I I really do think that you know, uh we need to be building cycle, cycling infrastructure on Nassau Street and and throughout the whole entire town. Um so yeah, I hope that that will be explored as part of this concept review. And also, actually, on a similar note, I I don't want to dominate, but um I I know that uh a lot has been kind of baked in to the the Witherspoon corridor. Um but uh I I was wondering whether or not you know, uh you know, there is that concept that um the university had about potentially like actually having uh bike lanes instead of like large bike lanes instead of um like an actual uh road strip down the middle. I and one of their roads, and I was wondering if that could be possible. I I I mean, I don't know, I doubt DOT would allow that, but um on a, on a public road. I know that the university is kind of able to do that because it's, they have private roads. But um I was just wondering if uh if that was looked into at all.
Are you talking about an advisory bike lane?
Well, so I I I remember when Princeton University came to present, they were proposing to take uh, you know, a road. And instead of having like a stripe down the middle, uh you know, for cars, separating cars, they actually just like turned the the road into two giant bike lanes, so that way um, you know, it it kind of gives the tension or the uh the predominance to the to the cycle cyclists as opposed to um the the car. Um and so maybe that could be an alternative to kind of, you know, give more attention to the cyclists.
Though I, that would definitely be a challenge on Nassau Street, but
Oh, yeah, definitely on Nassau Street, but I was thinking potentially on Witherspoon Street. I think that, you know, uh Nassau Street, obviously. Um you know, it's a state, state road and you know, I think i- if you can get the cycle track, that would be fantastic, but I I think that Witherspoon is a local road. Um and so maybe there's some more flexibility to do something similar to what the university is proposing. I can't remember which road it is, but I think it's
They have it on College Road and they have it on Lawrence Drive.
Right.
And I think it's part of one of the approvals, is it Ivy Lane?
Yeah.
It might be as well.
So that would be great to have on Witherspoon as well.
Okay.
It's a new road.
I'm sorry, Justin.
Uh it's a new road, part of the E S and C's project is going to be one of those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Witherspoon carries a a ton of um, a ton of bike traffic.
Right. Yeah, and it's it's kind of, it's still dangerous. I mean, I I I'm glad that it's gonna, the speed limit's gonna be lowered, but you know, I oftentimes jump on it and you know, cars are you're competing with cars and and especially since, you know, the school is right there. You know, it'd be great to provide as much safety for potentially, you know, students that, you know, might want to ride their bike to the library or, you know, into town. So or vice versa. And then I I just wanted to quickly ask about what the status is of bike lanes on Harrison. Because I know that that was something that was discussed in the past.
Yes, we uh, we are working with Michael Baker on a corridor study. They've gotten through the phase of gathering data. They've um they've had traffic collector traffic data collectors out there. Um I think they've also done turning movement calculations and looked at crash history. So I think the next step will be to have public engagement. Uh and as we're entering the summer, that may take place this uh this fall. We're hoping that we'll have some sort of a final report by the end of the year.
Great. Thanks.
Uh huh.
Thanks for those things, Zenon. Um Owen O'Donnell and then Jack Taylor.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is absolutely great. Um you know, both uh in terms of infrastructure and streetscape uh improvements that are going to be, that are definitely needed. Well, two things I wanted to ask about. One is the uh the rapid flashing beacons, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons um that on two oh six, those are absolutely essential. And there's also the intersection at Ewing and two oh six. Uh it's not the most heavily pedestrian trafficked uh area, but I go by there all the time. And every once in a while, you see somebody, it's almost like a squirrel trying to get across the street. Um you know, I was wondering if there was any thought to putting an R R F B at that intersection as well.
There is not right now. Um as part of the vision study in the early two thousands, there was an idea of putting a roundabout in there. Um more for vehicular movement, obviously. Uh I think if anything happens in there, it would be probably a traffic signal. Um but we'll be, I see that there was a crash that occurred there tonight.
Yes.
So we'll be uh, we'll be working with police to see where um where it falls in terms of crash rates. Yes, preconsolidation, that was one of our uh highest crash rate locations in the township. Uh it dropped off quite a bit, but we'll continue to monitor it.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. And the second, the second uh question I had, you said that eight of the nine pump stations are going to be completely replaced. How did we get so lucky with the ninth one? Is it a newer?
I don't know. I think it needs some uh some repairs, but at least not a full replacement. Yeah.
Oh, great. No, but thank you, thank you very much for uh for all the work that went into this and for the continued uh work in Princeton. I know I keep telling people, you know, don't worry, if the work will be done and you'll love what's, when it's finished.
And the good thing is, is that we tried to do everything under the ground as well as above the ground, so while it's a lot of disruption, at least we won't have to come back, you know, knock wood for kind of twenty years.
Yes. So thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank, thanks Owen. Uh Jack Taylor and then Tim Quinn.
Yeah, let me first of all say, Deanna, I'm as impressed as Owen, and I'm sure all of us are. Superb. I'm impressed. Makes me optimistic about our town. I want to talk about stormwater. I was very impressed. We were, we, the planning board, received an extensive report or summary or description from Jim Bridger about stormwater. This was during the twenty twenty-two planning board year. Two questions really. First of all, have we essentially, in your capital program, dealt with the practical issues that he raised, number one? But number two, he raised a major issue which hasn't been discussed this morning. And I've, I'm, I'm not clear about the engineering term, but he said that Princeton in stormwater management had still a fundamental problem calling for, I want to use the word, a giant swale. It's not a swale, somewhere to keep or hold or manage the water and that until we had dealt with that, I understood, we would face the risk of flooding. And I wonder, what is the status? Was that considered? What is that project and where, where does it stand?
Oh my goodness, I could talk to you all night on these answers. Um so let's see. Part of the capital program um that had, was funded previously and that we're continuing with is replacement of culverts under the roadways. Uh we have a list of at least six right now that will be um put into the design phase this year. That does not address all of our problems. Um Princeton, I'm sure everybody is aware, becomes an island Princeton, I'm sure everybody is aware, becomes an island in. In very extreme weather events. You know, DEP now has recognized that the, the planning and design. Related to stormwater has not been sufficient. They just released new inland flood rules. Which, um, will be impacting applications that come to you as well as our infrastructure projects. Because it elevates the amount of rainfall and runoff that we have to design for. Um, as well as looking at how to size our structures. So. It's, it's a big project to try to address stormwater in Princeton. In addition to the fact that we have high groundwater and we have soils that don't. Always, uh, accept. Infiltration. I'm sure you've heard that on your planning board meetings. But we are taking steps both through our design projects to replace culverts and to make upgrades. Whenever we do a road project, but there's also a, um, a study underway right now to look at. Creating a stormwater utility. Which could assist the municipality in funding. Uh, vastly more capital improvement projects as well as, uh, a dedicated staff. That only. Is, is responsible for operating, maintaining and improving, um, stormwater systems in town. So that study's underway. We're actually going to be coming back to council. In July. To give them an update as to where we are and see if we can move ahead in the study. But anytime we do a project, we look at what can we do to improve storm drainage. It's, it's. You know, I think our consultants say we're not even going to solve this in twenty years, but every step we can take with our projects, we try to do that.
No, thank, thank you. That, that's the perspective that I was hoping you'd provide. But I simply think in, in principle, that this is a subject that the planning board. Prioritizes that we should maintain. Close contact, have reports from time to time. And in particular, planning board members may well even have suggestions. On how some of the capital issues. That you're facing in this analysis and this study can be handled.
Yeah, and we're, whenever you can, um, encourage your applicants. To come in and meet with staff before they really get engaged in a design process. Uh, with the new stormwater rules, you really need to incorporate stormwater management. Into the site plan rather than leaving it to the end and dropping it where you have available space and.
But fundamental change to site plan design that has happened over the last several years is that stormwater management is, happens on the front end. With a whole team of people, engineers, planners, landscape architects, the whole enchilada. Um, and we are systematically encourage, um, uh, potential. Uh, applicants and, you know, folks with projects in mind to come, to come in ahead of time. That's, that's, uh. Good advice and, and we're following it, I know, um, already. Yeah. And to Mr., and to your point, Jack, um, there are some. Well, it'll be interesting to see how, you know, how things go in July and whether. Uh, council, you know, decides to move ahead with phase two. Uh, of this, um, study, um, for a stormwater utility. And, and if that happens, I think it would be good for a planning board to just, you know, get a briefing from staff. Uh, either, either Mr. Purcell or somebody else on your staff to. Um, just give us a sense of. Of how that's going. The Flood and Stormwater Commission is, is, um, keenly tuned into it. Um, and a couple of us on the planning board sit on that, on that, um, body as well. Um, is that, is that it for you, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Quinn. You're on mute.
Uh, thank you. Um, Deanna, real pleasure to see you and to hear all these exciting plans. Uh, thank you. Uh, I, a couple of, I, I'd also wonder if this could be. An annual report of, uh, capital improvements that are planned before this board, because I think would be very helpful. Not so much as my colleague, Mr. Taylor suggested that. We would have input, but it's certainly good to know when we're hearing land use applications. What the infrastructure improvements are, are planned for specific areas. So, um, I don't want to add to your workload any, but, um, I, I think we would benefit from that. My, my question had to do, you mentioned that there would be sanitary sewer repair and replacement to Hamilton. Um, and that you expected that this would be a prelude to. Realizing the Wiggins Hamilton, or at least some elements of the Wiggins Hamilton. Plans that. That was reviewed four or five years ago. What section of Hamilton specifically are getting the, and are these repairs or replacements?
Um, this. So the sewer would be a, uh, full dig and replace. Um, we would not be doing any of the I and I. Treatments, uh, for a couple of reasons, um, but this. It's a dig and replace, and I think the limits are walnut to more. And if I recall correctly on the corridor study, that would include a traffic signal and a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. And then the ever-present question of what to do with parking. Uh, vis a vis lanes, so.
Yeah, we, we won't. Go down that rabbit hole tonight.
Good thing.
Or at least I won't. Um, and I just wonder, so there, there were, it seemed to me there are about half a dozen or more or up to ten. Sort of discreet projects, um, involved in your report. I took notes, but I, I kind of lost count. What's the overall timeline for this? It, it's all been funded and how long do you expect to? Realize just sort of like the, so what would the timeline be for the sewer projects to start with?
Uh, I think we are looking at next summer for the sewer. Well. Some of the sewer work is actually going to be starting probably, um. This fall, late summer, early fall. Uh, and then continue into next year. The, the pump stations are probably two years out. But the I and I projects are starting this fall. Hamilton will be next summer. Uh, because we're still at the, we haven't prepared any of the construction documents yet.
You mean, you don't want to dig it up when school's in session?
No.
Joking. Um, so for everything that we heard tonight would say. And I'm not holding, obviously, we're not holding you to this, but would a ballpark be like? Five years? To realize these improvements or is that?
No, the engineering improvements will be next year.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, Witherspoon Street, we actually have to award the construction contract by October this year.
Oh, great.
So that's, that is, the, the design is finished and we're about to submit to state DOT because it is partially funded by a grant. So that will be going out a bit soon. Um, and then, you know, the rest of the work we're anticipating to do. To do next year.
Great. Thank you again. And, um, do consider an annual visit to the planning board.
Oh, yeah, no, we definitely will. We, uh, we're so appreciative that. Council, um, really stepped up to help. Take care of some of the deferred maintenance that happened previously. And, uh, give us enough funding to move all of these great projects ahead. So, um, so we'll definitely come back next year. And, um, show the, the next batch of great projects that, uh, the council will fund for us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much. As a famous person might say, it's a BFD. Um, much appreciated.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Yes, thank you. Where's my agenda? Here we go. Um, next up, we have, um, two hearings, um, both from the trustees of Princeton University. First, a minor site plan with variances for additional signage. This is at South Drive and Elm Drive, block forty-five point zero one, lot one zero one. File number P twenty-three twenty-three dash three, four, five, PM.
Madam Chair, proof of publication is in order. I take it from Kerry, proof of services in order. The notice is proper and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Mr. Lesko, I'm looking for you on my screen and not seeing you right. Right this minute. Get us, oh, there you are.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I see, I see the yellow box around your face now. Um, thank you. Why don't you get us started and then we'll quickly move, uh, to the university.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Jerry, would you like to swear me in?
Yes, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
So I swear affirm.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, I'm going to try to be brief tonight for both these university applications and my introduction and comments. Um, I will share my screen really quick. This application, uh, you should be somewhat familiar with. Uh, for the, uh, this is signage for the new residential colleges. And what I'm showing right now is the, and hopefully you can see it. The cover sheet of the plans, uh, the site plans that were provided, uh, the vicinity map. The, uh, location is west of Washington, uh, and north of Faculty Road. A kind of. Somewhat parallel to, to the bridge over Washington, a little south of the Pope R D Fields. Um, you know, the application from, uh, it's, or, or the development from the recent applications. Um, in twenty nineteen, the new residential colleges, uh, for these two big buildings were, was approved by this board. And then earlier this year, uh, the university came back for, uh, with a signage application for twenty-one signs and associated both variants. Uh, and that was approved by the board. The application tonight is for an additional four signs that require variance relief. Uh, and as I said earlier, uh, this application was applied for as a minor site plan. Um, and it was classified as one by the Site Plan Committee last week. I know the university has a presentation as well as these plans, uh, so I will let them, hand it over to them to show us the signs, uh, that they're applying for tonight.
Great. Um, thanks, Justin. Um, Mr. Degrazia.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Lesko. Uh, we appreciate the introduction. Um, as, uh, Mr. Lesko indicated. We have presented a signage package, uh, a little while back. Um, at that time, you probably, you may remember that I did mention, we would probably, we were looking at and evaluating some additional needs. And we may be back with a couple of, uh, additional signs and we finished that and we're here tonight. Um, it's really a very simple application. We have two additional halls that are be, are being named. And two additional signs related to head of college. Um, again, you'll see that they're really small in size compared to what you think about with signage. They're tasteful, well-integrated and very similar to what's there right now, um, in terms of the packet, the package that was previously approved. Um, if there's no questions, I'd like to just jump right into our presentation and introduce our witness, university architect Ronald McCoy. We can have him sworn in. I'd also like to present him as, in addition to a witness, as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Sure, let's also swear in Aaron Malnerick.
Oh, yeah.
Our project manager.
Right, exactly. Yeah, I'd like to swear everybody in at the same time.
You could both raise your hand. Do you swear? Mr. Mal, Mal.
Aaron, raise your right hand.
Yeah, you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth.
I do.
I do.
Okay, if you please state your full name for the record and spell your last name.
I'll go first. Uh, Ron McCoy, M C C O Y, university architect.
And I'm Aaron Malnerick, last name M A L N A R I C K. I'm the project manager for this project. Also an architect.
And Mr. McCoy, your license is currently valid in the state?
Yes.
We'd like to propose, he's been here many times before, he's testified. We'd like to propose him as both, uh. A fact witness and also an expert in architectural.
We accept those qualifications. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would suggest we very, very quickly go through the qualifications again, because this is, this is an independent proceeding.
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. McCoy, can you just give us a, a brief, um, synopsis of your education and licensing?
Um, I have a master's degree in architecture from Princeton University. I've been licensed for probably thirty-five years. Uh, I'm a, a Mertes professor from Arizona State University. And I've been university architect at Princeton University for the past fifteen years.
Thank you. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you very much. Um, we have a presentation that we've submitted. And I believe is on your website. We can mark that as exhibit A one.
Yep.
Okay, now I'll turn it over to Mr. McCoy.
Great, I will. Let me launch the slides and see if we can go through this, uh, quickly. So, uh, trust you can see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. So as Christopher said, there are two hall signs. They're not new halls, but the location of the signs are new. And there are two head of college signs, which are new signs. As Mr. Lesko presented, this is a, a site plan. I just want to point out that these are internal to the campus. They don't face any public streets. All the streets around them are private streets and they're south end of the campus and not visible for any public roads. This is the site plan of the two colleges, uh, New College West is on the left, EA College on the right. These are the previously approved exterior signs. Um, you'll see that in the next slide, I'm going to point to relocation of the signs in this south, uh, west portion of the site. And the southeast portion of the site. But while I have this slide up, the reason that we're here is that. We discovered that as people experience the site, all of the identity faces toward the central courtyard. Except the location that we proposed for these two original signs. So those hall signs, uh, do not serve their function for identity and wayfinding because they're basically around the corner. Uh, that they have to turn the corner to the southwest or the southeast to see those signs. So we're proposing to relocate them. Uh, so that they face into that central courtyard, like all the other signs in, in the project. So then this is the proposed signage. Just if you, these, these yellow dots here are now facing, this one is now facing to the east. This one is now facing to the west. So they share the same visibility through the central courtyard as all the other, uh, hall signs. These two, this one here is a head of college house for New College, uh, West. The one over here on the right is a head of college house for EA College. Uh, these again are a level of, of identity that we did not have included in our original, uh, variance application. Uh, this is the first time we've embedded the head of college houses within the residential college system. And we just needed the extra identity so that everybody could understand where the head of college house is for events or special programs or things like that. Um, this is a.
Roger, for the record, I just want to identify that. That was slide five, and now you are on slide.
Slide six. That's right. Uh, I'm sorry, these are not numbers. So slide six. This is the signage, uh, that, that we are proposing. And so this is a photograph of the, you'll see this, uh, key plan on the left here. Shows a photograph. We're at the, uh, southeast corner. Of New College West and at the Jose Feliciano Hall. We're looking to the west. And this is the location of the proposed sign. Now, what you're seeing here was an interim, interim signage that we had installed. For the, for the dedication. And this is now the application to permanently locate that signage there. It is the same size and font and detail of all the signage in the rest of the project. And you see it just sort of. As, uh, others have said, it sits quietly on that facade. This is a view, um, looking a little bit to the south. We've moved up further north into that courtyard, looking to the. Looking to the south in that central space, and you can see here that um, it it presents itself, and as you get closer, you can read it. But our previous signage was around the corner, and it was not legible from the central spaces, so that's the reason we're proposing this, this is slide seven, Christopher?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then uh, on the right-hand side of the slide, you see a a view across more more directly at uh that signage at the. Uh, southeast corner of that hall. Slide eight, now we've shifted across to the eastern side of that central courtyard, looking at Mannion Hall. And uh, this is uh, the s- the the signage that again faces toward that central courtyard. Uh, so this is the new, this is the, this was was installed as the temporary signage, and now we're seeking permanent approval for this signage here. Slide nine gives another view, we've now uh moved further south in the site, looking more to the north. On the right-hand side, we're we're moving, looking to the north, on the left-hand side, we're looking to the, to the south, so again, they face toward the central courtyard. And they have a uh equivalency with all the other signage in the project. Slide ten moves to the head of college houses, as I said, uh, these have been. They're, they're new to our program, we had not had signage on them originally, but because of events and special occasions that happen. We needed to have signage so people could find their way around there, this sign, this door happens to be right opposite an entrance to a residential hall. And we didn't want to have ambiguity about where the entrance to the hall was, and where the entrance to the head of college house was, this is slide eleven, we're on?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, that's uh ten, I'm sorry.
This is ten, okay, this is ten. Um, so very small sign that sits there, this is uh, this is slide eleven, just shows. Uh, what was submitted for review, did not have this little plus sign. So we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's, and making sure you see the plus sign here. Slide twelve, this is a a view in of the of the location in situ. So we're looking uh at that sign in context, you see, it's quite small, it's just there, uh, basically like a a a name, name plaque next to the door. Third, slide thirteen, now we're over on the Yea College side of the project, the eastern side of the project, you see the key plan at the lower, lower left here. And this is the head of college house for uh, the Yea College. This is a generic name, because this this head of college house does not have a donor name, so that's why it's a little bit different than the other one. But same strategy, very basic sign, just an identity sign next to the door, so people can uh fi- find it for events. And then stepping back further, slide fourteen, stepping back further in the, in the field, you'll see, it really fits the brick module. And is a very quiet sign, you can barely see it as you step away from it. So that's, that's, that's what we're here to discuss, I'm happy to take any questions or uh. Answer any questions you might have.
Um, thank you for that, that's very straightforward. Uh, any questions for uh Mister McCoy or Mister DeGrazia? From board members, I don't see any hands go up. So, are. Do you have, and is Mister Malnarek going to speak at all, or is he?
He, he, he was here to rescue me if there's a complicated question.
Okay, um, Mister O'Donnell.
Okay, I'll jump in, thank you, um, I n- I noticed on slide twelve, I wonder if you could pull that up again?
Yes.
I believe it was the Jones and Feliciano House.
Yes.
The, I'm, I'm sorry, the go-forward one, and one more, please, where it shows the actual doorway, yes, that's the one. Would the sign be better situated on the opposite side of the door? Would that be more prominent for people? I'm not sure which way people are going to be approaching. Uh, the walkway. Um, you know, from the, on the, the picture on the left, you kind of lose the sign uh quite a bit. If you're walking by and looking for.
I'm not sure, because it's a metal sign, it has reflections.
Okay.
Uh, I think it actually be made more legible in the shadow of the portal, and it's also near the, the kind of handle side of the door.
Okay, that, that's absolutely fine, I was just a, just a comment that I had, okay.
Also, you can approach the door from both sides, it's a little out of view, but there is a portal beyond, so it gets about equal traffic.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Um, any other questions uh for the university? And if not, would someone like to? Uh, make a motion on this.
We have to open this up to the public.
Oh, of course, oh, I'm so sorry, I knew it was, I knew I was forgetting something. I need a little checklist to go on every single meeting, I I um do something boneheaded like that, okay, so seeing. No other hands up from board members um or staff, I will open up. Um, for public comment on this application, any members of the public who wish to address the board? Um, about this. Um, minor site plan with variances, now is your opportunity, you should raise your hand virtually. Uh, using the little icon, I'm not seeing any hands go up. So I will leave it another few seconds, going once, going twice. No hands, no comments, so I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. Um, any, any deliberations or thoughts that board members want to share, uh, Mister O'Donnell, Mister Muller?
Yeah, do you want to see it for um professionals, and want to make any comments?
Oh, you know, and I I assumed that they. Yes, I do. Um, are, are any uh. Mister Bridger, Mister Weissman, Mister Lesko, any other thoughts um that you want to share? Thought that your briefing memos were very straightforward and. Any, anything else you want to flag for the board to consider?
Let, let me spread them both in before they answer, uh Derek and uh Dan, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do. Uh, I, we don't have anything to add, I'll speak for Dan, but these are really minor things, and hopefully uh. Someday the code will be revised so that the university doesn't have to come and uh seek approval for these type of signs.
Amen.
Yeah, thank you for that perspective.
Thought I was muted, I'm sorry. Although I think that comment resonated, I guess.
Mister Weissman, anything to add?
Uh, we had one comment, uh, it was extremely minor, the, the, there was a permit granting temporary signage. Uh, for the installation of this temporary signage, uh, from what I've heard tonight, it sounds like um what was installed is proposed to be the permanent signage, is that right?
Yes.
That's correct.
So if this is granted, obviously our comment is, is moot. Um, so it shouldn't be added as a condition or anything like that.
Thank you.
Good, so I I think we are finally um ready for any, any final comments um that board members have. Any final comments, questions, thoughts, or a motion?
I'd be willing to move the motion with the variances.
Move approval of this uh minor site plan with variances?
Yes. Thank you.
Is there a second?
If, if I may, um, just in addition to that, obviously, you want to classify it as as a minor as well. And then there are several checklist waivers, they're on page two or five of the memo by by Dan and um. And Derek.
Um, and I. Which they recommended, um.
Yep.
Uh, allowing, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And and I I will say, I, I don't see any conditions, uh, there's nothing in the testimony, or there's nothing in the, the memos. Certainly given the clarification by uh by Dan, that need to be made conditions.
I'll second Mister O'Donnell's uh motion.
Great, moved by Owen O'Donnell, seconded by Tim Quinn, uh Kerry, will you call, call the vote, please? Call the roll for a vote, you're, you're on mute. Ms. Phillip?
Mister Lesko, looks like uh roll call for you is in order again.
Certainly, I'm, I'm happy to fill in, uh, beginning with Mister McGowan.
Yes.
Mister O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mister Quinn?
Yes.
Miss Sacks?
Yes.
Mister Tech Charlie?
Yes.
Mister Taylor?
Yes.
And Miss Wilson?
Yes.
She passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, you're welcome, we have a minor site plan with conditional use, um, also from the trustees of Princeton University. Um, this is at two fifty-two Nassau Street, block thirty-point zero-two, lot seventy-nine. This is file number P twenty-three twenty-three dash three-four-nine P M slash C O. Mister Lesko?
Madam Chair, before, yeah, proof of publication is order, is in order, uh, the notice is uh proper, um, and the board has jurisdiction.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Jerry, would you like to swear me in?
Yes, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Justin.
Yeah, thank you, Jerry, and before I get into it, there's one thing that's bothered me about my screen, this poster behind me. Although it happens to be black and orange and say Princeton, it is about the municipality, it is not. And not our friends, the applicants before us tonight, so let's.
I think you have to accuse, uh, Mister Lesko.
I went to school up Route One, uh, a little further, so, so I'm good, uh. But anyway, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, um, before you, uh, the second application, as I mentioned before, is also a minor site plan. And was classified as such by the Site Plan Committee last week. Um, I will share my screen to show you, uh, two fifty-two Nassau Street. And uh, Jerry, this is a uh Google Maps street view image of the subject property. Um, it's on the north side of Nassau Street, on the block between Pine and Maple, uh, between the I V N over here and the building with. Uh, the Nassau Small World Coffee, uh Nassau Seafood and Blue Point Grill, um, there's also a parking lot behind the I V N. Uh, that is parking for these uh spaces. As you can see here, Tiger Labs previously occupied this space, uh, and I will note, uh, similar to my comments just now, uh. That Tiger Labs was not owned or run by the university, although uh, as you can see by the name, uh. We all know the impact of the university uh on the town. The application before us tonight is.
Justin, but let's, let's mark that as, at least electronically, as exhibit O one.
Okay, thank you. Um, the application tonight is a uh conditional use variance request. Uh, along with the site plan approval, to operate an educational use, uh, as this is in the neighborhood business zone of the former borough. The university stated in the application that the use is, quote, general office and administrative use, focused primarily on research and data analysis, end quote. And again, I'll let the university present, there are a few physical changes, uh, though the university provided a floor plan. Detailing a new elevator, uh, that will be internal to the building, and a ramp to the garage, uh, parking in the rear of the building. Uh, both for ADA accessibility, uh, I know there's been some uh back and forth with the university about the ramp, so. Uh, rather than showing that floor plan, I I will, you know, defer to them on their presentation. And then, you know, after that, the comments that I have in my report are just based on accessibility to the building. Uh, part of this application is for ADA accessibility, um, and really just the comment is making sure that that makes sense. Um, as well as a comment on the number of staff that will be using the building and uh how they'll uh arrive. So uh, and for you to consider that for the conditional use request, so with that being said, um, I'm happy to turn it over to the university.
Okay, any other, since this says, um. The continually are. Since there are issues here re- related to conditional use. A- and I know that Derek Bridger will um be called to testify on that at some point. Um, I, I think maybe it makes sense to to swear in Derek and Dan now. Um, in case some questions come up during the presentation, which I understand is short. Um, so Derek, if you could, there we go. Um, we could swear both of you in, are there any other, I don't think there are any other professionals of ours that would be called on, yeah, so just you two. And then if you, if there's anything at all that you want to say before Mister DeGrazia starts on behalf of the university, um, you, you have a minute to. To do that, so Mister Muller, would you swear them in?
Yes, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth? So, so, thank you, Derek and Dan.
Um, I don't have any comments, uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions that arise uh during the uh presentation.
Okay, great, thank you. Mister DeGrazia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, for the record, my name is Christopher DeGrazia, fellow from the law firm of Figury, Drinker, Fiddle and Reeve. Here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. As uh Mister Lesko pointed out, we're here for a conditional use application. Um, the university would like to rent and occupy the second floor of the building that was shown by Mister Lesko. Um, it is, as he said, it was previously occupied and it is now vacant. Um, the, the university is required to obtain conditional use approval, because under your definition. Educational institutions are required to get conditional use approval. And um, we are here also for a site plan, because your ordinance requires both the conditional use approval and a site plan application. Even though we're not proposing any traditional site plan improvements. And in fact, um, we're not proposing any exterior um changes at all. Other than maybe a tweaking of the sign that was, would be there for any, any application. So, like I said, it's a very interesting ordinance, um, if somebody else came in and proposed. Um, uh, general office, administrative use, uh, focused on research and data analysis. You wouldn't have to be here, but because the university is signing the lease, we actually have to present. Um, it as a conditional use and meet the standards, which I believe you'll see that we easily do. Um, the university is, as you probably are well aware, a very big advocate of accessibility. And even though we're a tenant here, um, they are interested in making an investment into the building and. Creating an interior elevator. Um, the elevator will go from the second floor down into a basement where there is an open garage. And there, there are, I believe, eight, seven, nine parking spaces, seven of them are allocated to the university. Um, six will be used mostly for visitors, and that, that sixth, that last seventh space will be striped for ADA. So it's a very easy access for somebody to pull into the garage. And then right next to it will be the elevator, um, and somebody will be able to just park their car, jump into the elevator. And have access to the, to the building. Um, those that will be coming from the university that have other mobility issues, um, whether it's a long-term or short-term. Um, can use the university's van service, um, I think we've talked about it in other applications, there's a power transit service, Tiger Access. Which really a point-to-point um provision of picking up people and delivering them throughout um the university. As well as uni- uh visitors, so um, these vans, which are normal-sized vans, can easily access the garage. And place people right at the elevator, so in terms of access, we think it's a really nice plan and uh much better than the existing condition. Since there's really no access at all. Um, to be, to be clear, and and I think Justin was, uh, let Mister Lesko was a alluding to this. Um, that uh, at one point, we were looking at whether or not we needed to add a ramp in the rear. Which would have been an exterior improvement, we're not proposing that at this time, so we've, we've looked at specifically how we're gonna use the space. As I just described, and um, it's not gonna, we're removing it from our proposal, so we're not requesting any type of approval. Related to an outdoor ramp. Uh, with that being said, um, I think I have, yes, okay, I got my. My witnesses here, I think what we'll do is, before I turn to the first one, we could go through and have our witnesses sworn in.
Yep, if you can raise your, if uh Christopher, you could identify witnesses and.
Yes. Paul Lamarche, Bill Giddings, and Paul Phillips.
Yeah, let me just get the spellings, Lamarche. Let me just get the spellings. LaMarche is, how do you spell that?
It is L A capital M A R C H E.
I believe we may have lost him.
Oh. It, he's having a little bit of issue with that, but we'll, we'll, we'll keep going and maybe come back to him when he gets back on.
Okay. Mr. Phillips and Mr. Giddings, if you raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
Just want to affirm, Christopher or either Mr. Giddings or Mr. Phillips is going to testify as an expert?
Yes. Mr. Phillips is a professional planner and will testify, and Bill Giddings is a professional architect and will testify as an architect.
Okay, and then you'll do the qualifications when you get to them?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can, we can actually do it right now, if you like.
That's fine.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Giddings, can you give us a little bit about your education background and licensing?
I'm a graduate of Carnegie Mellon University with B Arch. I've been working as, in Princeton, as an architect for thirty-three years, owner of Giddings Associates for the past twenty-six years, licensed for about twenty-nine years. We do, been working for the university for probably about twenty years, doing all types of alterations on existing buildings, and we've been before the board before.
We'd like to propose
We accept your qualifications, Mr. Giddings. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is Paul Phillips, professional planner. Paul, can you go through your qualifications, please?
Sure. I'm a principal in the firm of Phillips Price. I have over forty years of practice in Jersey. I'm a licensed professional planner, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I do hold a master's degree in urban planning from Hunter College. My firm advises roughly thirty municipalities and boards in New Jersey on planning, zoning, redevelopment, and affordable housing. I've been accepted as an expert in over two hundred and fifty municipalities in the state and on numerous occasions in Superior Court in New Jersey.
Thank you. We accept your qualifications too. Thanks, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you.
I was gonna have Paul LaMarche start, but I think he has, he's been having a little bit of difficulty with his internet. So I think I will move to Bill Giddings to talk a little bit about the design. When the university first got interested in the property, he looked at various ways to improve accessibility, focusing on where to locate an elevator and, and how to improve, improve access in the building. So I was hoping he could talk a little bit about that.
Sure.
And we'll mark this as Exhibit A one. It is a, how many slides do we have here, Phil?
Four.
Four total slides, and we previously submitted them to the, to the municipality.
These are the original plans submitted without the outside improvements. So, over on the right-hand side is Nassau Street. The entry to the second floor space is on the right-hand side of Tiger Noodles. You come in a small lobby, go up the staircase to the second floor. There is a second means of egress stairs from the second floor that exits you here. When you come down this shared drive, this is the entry to the parking garage where there's existing nine spaces. We're proposing to, to strike those spaces because they're quite worn. Two, two of the spaces are reserved for the other tenant. Seven of the spaces are, are reserved for the second floor space, one of which we are going to create into a handicap parking spot with a loading area, which would be the access to a new Lula, limited-use elevator to access the second floor. We, we did look at other locations for this Lula elevator. We tried to put one in the front entry. There, there was insufficient room within the footprint of the lobby to do this and meet code, because you cannot have an elevator inside of a staircase. It has to be separated. And so we did not have the room to build a separation elevator lobby to the stair lobby, so it would not fit in this location. So we deemed this as the next best location, because it worked well with the parking and provided access to the second floor. I'll show you here. This is the existing floor plan. There's three offices.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I'm sorry, Mr. Giddings. Christopher, do you want to have that marked as A two?
Yes, let's mark this as A two. I believe this is the plan that was submitted originally with the application identified as sheet. Can you see that, Bill? I can't.
Yes, yes, it was as sheet number A two.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is the existing floor plans, the three offices in the front, a center core of bathrooms. This is the entry stair from the front lobby. This is the second egress stair that I mentioned earlier. And then six offices in the back and open office area around, around the, the center. The proposed Lula elevator would be right in the center of the space. It would be a pass-through elevator, so you enter from the left in the garage, and you exit on the right-hand side into the second floor space. It fits into the existing structure of the building, does not require any roof modifications or exterior modifications.
Christopher, is this one of the foursome sheets that was submitted to the university, to the municipality?
Correct. So this is as well, what sheet number is this?
This, this is the same A two.
Oh, okay.
I just zoomed in so everyone can see it better.
I don't think the A one that we received is the same as what you're showing, though.
It's not. It was, it was the original one with, that we submitted previously without the ramp, without the outside improvements.
Okay.
Okay, so let me, let me try to, to clarify this. So, at the beginning of the week, we submitted a exhibit package in, consistent of four pages. The first page included a ramp on the outside that we were showing. We went back to our, in, in our presentation, I guess, went back to our original submittal, which is the first sheet, which does not, does not show the ramp, because that's what we're proposing this evening, evening, and I thought it would be just clearer to show it that way.
And in the, the original plans submission, what sheet is this?
The A, the A one was, is the one that he was talking about.
A one, okay, thank you.
And just, and Bill was discussing a little bit about the parking spaces when he was showing A one. And just so the board understands, what's great about this applicant here is that you'll have a mix of some faculty members and fellows, probably about four or so. We have a couple administrators there, and then, you know, off the back, off the, you know, from day one, we'll probably have somewhere around fifteen researchers or post-docs. All of those people that will be coming to the, and eventually over time, because you asked about how many people will be there, it'll probably increase over time to something like thirty-five or forty people in the space. But what's great about the space is that unlike prior tenants or future tenants, this area, the people that will be, you know, either walking or biking or busing here, will not necessarily be driving, that the spaces, the seven spaces will be, you know, will be used mostly for visitors. People that will come to this site, either other faculty to see how the research is going or, or so on. But most of the people that will be coming here will actually be utilizing the university system. So they have a permit for the, the university parking system, and they will bus over. I think the closest bus stop is Olden, which is very close across the street, basically on an angle. And then you also have people walking and biking, and so that's what's really nice about this application, because there isn't a demand for parking spaces right around the building, like any other office use would have. Okay, Bill, do you want to go to the next sheet?
Well, I, I think the next sheet, I don't know, Paul, if you want to start, or talking about the, the next sheet really was just the location plan showing, zoom in here.
Yeah, let's, let's identify this. So this is sheet, this is the, the third page of the package that we sent into the municipality, and it is described as having, I guess, a key map on the left and then some photographs to the right and below.
It's, it's, it's labeled A three. What this location plan shows is two fifty-two Nassau Street right here, and the, the two bus stops with the Tiger Transit
Okay.
that Christopher was talking about.
And can you go to the photos so we can at least go through those? Just so the board can see, photo A is what the building looks like. Yeah, photo A on that sheet is sort of what the building looks like today. B, you also see that space. And, and, yeah, we'll run through. C shows the access drive coming down. E is the entrance to the garage. Oh, I, I just wanted to point out, as you can see, between B and I, I is the existing bike parking in the garage, so that people will be biking, will come down that access driveway where you see the truck come into the garage, park their bikes there, and then go up the elevator. As you can see in the exhibits, or the photos labeled as B, there's really no space in that area to add any bike parking there, so we'll, we're going to use the bike parking as it currently exists today, which is in the garage area. And like, unlike a business or, or, you know, like a retail business where you have visitors coming and going, these are basic researchers that are going to be familiar with where the biking parking is and will be easily able to find it and utilize it. I think, did I see Paul? Okay, Paul, you were able to get in.
Yes, I apologize. My internet, of course, went down right at the time when I was supposed to start. Apologize.
So, Paul, I'm, I'm going to jump over to you. I, I'm not sure if you, you were able to probably hear what was going on, but Bill has taken us through the plans. We did show that last sheet with the photos to give the board an idea of what the property looked like. I talked a little bit about the number of employees, four faculty, two administrators, fifteen researchers at the day one, so about twenty-one people on site, and we're expected to see that grow some, probably upwards to like thirty-five or forty people. And that, I was wondering, is there anything you would else like to add about the use of the property and who, who will be there?
Mr. Degrassia, Mr. LaMarche needs to be sworn in.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I forgot that he got cut off before he got sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, Paul LaMarche, L A, L A, M A R C H E.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Can you tell us what your title is?
I'm Vice Provost for Space Programming and Planning for Princeton University.
Right, thank you. I was trying to talk quickly before we left, let, we lost contact with you again. So, yes, can you give us a little bit more flavor as to how the space is going to be used?
So it's, it's basically an office use. There's, the researchers there will be doing research on computers and, and is more like an academic library-type research. It's not chemicals or anything like that. It is basically the, the first program that we're looking at, but this is a program to look at data activities associated with health. And those activities have a number of, of, of efforts to try to see if there's waves which we can improve the healthcare system in the United States, and looking at methodologies by which we can analyze data around how health is, is utilized in, in the United States, and looking at things like policy and things like that to, to improve the situation for people. We, we do plan, as time goes on, to also use other, other research-type activities in the, in the building, but all would be office-related, and what we're looking at is, again, faculty, staff, and some graduate students doing research, and then the occasional undergraduate doing perhaps a, a senior thesis or something like that.
Right. Paul, do you have anything else to add, or I think that pretty much covers it, unless there's questions, I'll, I'll turn to our planner.
If, if I could ask Mr. LaMarche a question, could, could you, could you give me your title again?
Sure. It's Vice Provost for Space Programming and Planning.
Thank you. No problem.
Madam Chair, if there's no questions, I'd like to turn
Doesn't look like there are any questions. I think we're ready to hear from Mr. Phillips.
Okay, this is Paul Phillips. He's already been sworn in and qualified.
We want, who's going to do A four?
The last slide.
I guess I have to see what that is.
A four was just the existing site plan that was created by Hopewell Valley Engineering previously, that we based our drawing off of.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and as I said, I think, you know, Jerry, we included that because we're required to request the site plan, even though we're not proposing any improvements, so it showed what we, we had available to us and requested waivers for the other items.
Mr. Phillips?
Sure. So, very briefly, this property is located in the NB Neighborhood Business District. That zone, as you've heard, allows educational institutions as a permitted conditional use, subject to approval of the planning board and satisfaction of some specific requirements for conditional use approval that are set forth in the municipal zoning code. As has been described, the university is proposing to utilize the existing second-story space at two fifty-two Nassau Street for general office and administrative purposes. The focus principally on research and data analysis, as you, as you just heard. The researchers would have computer workstations. There are no classrooms, no special events anticipated, and the only physical improvements involved in the application would be the installation of the elevator within the interior space and the provision of a ADA accessible parking space directly adjacent there too, within the covered parking area of the building. So your ordinance has seven specific criteria for conditional use authorization, and a number of those criteria are clearly inapplicable to the subject application, and there are several others which are, either relate to submission requirements or they're merely informational. So, for example, one of the criteria relates to personal wireless telecommunications facilities. Another relates to conversions of residential uses to non-residential uses, neither of which applies, obviously, in connection with this application. Additionally, each application must be accompanied by a site plan. As you're aware, the applicant intends to reuse the existing space within the second floor of the building. That building and site plan was previously the subject of prior approvals, but the applicant, as you've heard, did submit plans which basically show the physical changes that are proposed as part of Uh, but the applicant, as you've heard, did submit uh plans which basically show the physical changes that are proposed as part of this. Uh, application. And then there are two criteria, criteria ENF, as I mentioned. They are, as I read them, largely informational and in in nature, and there's no real standard that an applicant has to satisfy. So it leaves essentially two criteria, which is the A criteria and the B criteria. The A criteria reads as follows. Uh, all proposed structures, equipment, uh, or materials shall be readily accessible for fire and police uh protection. So again, we're dealing simply with reoccupancy of space within an existing building. And site that had been the subject of prior uh site plan review and approval. And presumably at that time, there was input from police and fire. It's also my understanding that there are annual property uh inspections, uh particularly uh yearly fire. Inspections. And again, the only physical changes proposed are relatively minor and they don't. Uh, affect the site or building access. Other than the improvement in the access with the addition of the elevator within the uh parking area. So on criteria A, I think the bottom line is the applicant can clearly satisfy or comply with this standard. Uh, meanwhile, criteria B, and I'll read that as well. It's a little uh uh longer, but it's it basically says that the proposed use. Shall be of such location, size and character. That in general be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is proposed to be situated. Will not significantly impact the environment in an adverse way. And will not be detrimental to the orderly development of adjacent properties. Accor- in accordance with the zoning classification of said uh property. So I think first. Uh, and perhaps foremost, the proposed use is largely consistent with the prior use on the second floor of the building. Uh, secondly, office type uses are contemplated and allowed within the MB uh district. I believe they're also compatible with existing business uses in the immediate vicinity as well. Uh, third, the proposed use will actually be somewhat less intense. Than the prior o- office use in terms of the number of employees and as you've heard, the parking uh demands. So it will actually, I think, be less impactful on the site and surrounding neighborhood. Uh, but uh, I think by, at the same token, by reutilizing what is now uh available commercial space. In what I would characterize as an otherwise challenging market. Uh, I think this application will obviously benefit the larger downtown district. Uh, in terms of sort of advancing its overall uh health and vibrancy. So I believe criteria B can also be uh satisfied uh as part of this application. So and really that, I think, is it unless there are questions, it's a relatively straightforward. Application, uh, which in my opinion would warrant the conditional use uh authorization from this board.
Thank you for that. Um, any, uh, I guess I'm a little bit curious and I I I have a question for. Mister Bridger, unless you have anyone else, Mister Degrassia, that you want to present for testi- expert testimony?
Not at this time, unless you have some specific questions, I may need to uh reach down and pull out some other people, but.
Like rabbits out of your hat. So uh Mister Bridger in in the um. Land use and zoning. Uh, I'm sorry, the engineering and zoning um memo. You refer to these same um. Uh, criteria and standards that. Um, Mister Phillips just went through, and I'm curious about E and F, both of which I found, well, especially E, pretty confusing. Um, and uh, I just want to make sure that um. Well, one one of the things I found confusing about E, and maybe I just didn't read it enough times. Um, was the part that says the conditional use approval should be valid for one year. Unless preliminary approval of a site plan for the lot involving the conditional use has been granted. So we would be approving the site plan tonight. We're not, we're not talking about. A one-year approval. This is something that will carry forward. Until such time as the use changes again, presumably.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Except if I if I may add, uh, maybe we want to say something in the resolution about that because it does talk. Uh, Madam Chair, as you indicated about preliminary approval, I mean, there's no preliminary or final approval for a minor site plan. It's just a. Minor site plan approval. So I I think we want to indicate that this comes with an A.
Well, let's just be super clear about that uh uh in in the resolution. Uh, I don't mean to get ahead of ourselves, but I just want to make sure that that that's buttoned down.
Yep. Yep.
Um, and then I also had a couple of questions. Um. Uh, well, I'll just forge ahead since I don't see any other hands going up. Um, one is about the the elevator, as I understand it, it. It has two stops, the parking area, the the covered parking and the second floor. It does not start on, stop on the first floor, correct?
The parking level is the first floor. Uh, there's about a uh. A eight-inch step into the back door into Tig- Tiger Noodles going.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. So it's not below ground level at all. Okay. Got it. Um, I've never been back there. So if someone in a wheelchair approaches and, you know, needs to come to the facility and approaches from the sidewalk. They um go down that narrow driveway um into the covered parking area and enter through the. And and access the elevator there. So is there, is there any, I I mean, I guess I'm just, uh, I'm assuming that that's that that's the case. And I'm wondering whether there could be or should be a um. You know, some pavement markings or something to indicate um. That that is shared with, you know, with pedestrians and others on or. Uh, I just want to make sure we're we're creating an a a very safe access for for anyone. Uh, regardless of their mobility status.
I I don't think we have any objection to markings that the the planning board would like to see. Um, one of the things we did in evaluating it is that actually how it's going to be used. And I don't think we were either encouraging or expecting any um. Sort of wheel wheelchair access going down the driveway and up into the garage. Because the way that this will function from the university's perspective is if somebody with um mobility needs. Needs to get to this property, there is a van serviced from point to point. So they would not be. You know, walk, um, you know, using the wheelchair down the street across Nassau coming in. They would just say. Pick me up from here and bring me there. So the university will pick that person up and drop them off. Inside the garage, the van will drive in the garage and they will get right off into the elevator. For people that have their own, their own vehicles, they would use that ADA space, you know, so if you're.
Yeah, I I guess I'm thinking, I mean, that's sir, I I understand your point. Um, and I know that I mentioned only someone in a wheelchair, but this could apply to someone who's on crutches, someone who's. Eight and a half months pregnant, someone who uh has a. Um, you know, any other reason that they can't or don't want to use the stairs is going to need to come back. Uh, and I I recognize this is a big improvement because nothing exists, you know, there's no way for people to get to the second floor. Now without using the stairs. So I'm not, I'm not trying to create problems. I'm trying to just make sure that we. You know. Do what we can to make it uh safe and make it clear that there is elevator access through the garage for people who need it.
Yep, a- and again, this is.
Or people, somebody with a stroller. I mean, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, and and this is a site where you're not going to have. A huge amount of people that have not been to the site before. I mean, they're all coming pretty much. From the university, except for some people that are coming out of state, maybe, you know, like a a faculty visitor or. Somebody that gave a grant to the program and wants to come inspect the facility or ask questions. But those people will be using those six spaces. Um, so um, but again, if 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 it's deemed to be safer to put striping, we could certainly do that. Um, we just, we we just, um, you know, we were seeing that the pedestrian access. Would be from the ground level off of Nassau through the steps. And that people on vehicles would use the back or people on bikes would use the back. Or and and it covers those issues, the short-term mobility uh issues, like somebody in a cast. The university will pick them up and drop them off. So it does cover short-term mobility issues um to bring them right to the elevator. So, but then again.
I don't know whether others share this general concern. I'll, I I would like, you know, to to hear other other people's thoughts about it and maybe your professionals can can think about what. You know, what what might be done. I don't want to um. Um, beat this to death, but um I do think that folks who uh come to the site on bicycles might very well. Park their bikes out front too. Who I I I assume, I and I think that there is some on-street bike parking as well as bike parking in the garage. Is that? Does anybody know whether that's true? There's a fair amount of on-street bike parking in this area because a lot of people, you know, there are. Restaurants and and such.
I'm I'm not so sure of that. I I don't know.
Okay, well, I'm not suggesting that it should be added. Given, given the. The, I'm not suggesting it should be a requirement that the applicant add bike parking out front. I'm just saying that you should expect people who visit the site to park bikes out front. Um. Because it's easier, especially if they're going to dash up the stairs. Um, Mister Quinn and that, or Mister Lesko, well, Mister Quinn and then Mister Lesko and then Mister O'Donnell.
Thank you. You actually segwayed into uh one of my questions there and that that involves the. The bike parking. So we're, I think that we heard that twenty-one. There'll be twenty-one people coming to the site and uh that it's expected that. A fair number, although we weren't given a number, will arrive riding bikes and. We saw in the covered parking area, one existing bike rack. Um, uh, I think that's inadequate or I I think the rack that we saw would fit maybe five bikes. Um, and I wondered, uh, Mister Bridger, if. The bike parking ordinance uh that was whether. How how this, how the bike parking ordinance, the requirements of the bike parking ordinance, are they being met here or?
Um, thank you, Mister Quinn. It's a, since there's no expansion of the building and the the use is really, I mean, it's an educational use, but. It reads like an office use. Um, I think it's, it's not applicable in this situation. Um, the university. There might be some additional bike parking, like maybe bike parking on the wall that would uh. Provide some additional spaces in that space where they have that uh current bike parking structure that's on the ground. Uh, maybe there's a way to create some more bike parking in that space. Um, that would help. And I don't know if there's. Would help to have any signage that would say bike parking, you know, direct them, to direct anybody that comes to the site. Um. The bike parking in the in the garage, but I think, you know, it is going to be the university's uh by and large, it's going to be their. There there are people that come there, so I think they they will be familiar with the situation, but um, that's a good question. So. I I but I don't think the park, the bike parking ordinance is triggered with this application since um. The uses are are very similar. Um.
I I would suggest then, as a condition of approval, that the university be required to add bike parking. To the interior area where there's an inadequate uh rack right now. And my other, my other question um had to do with this. Uh, question of mobility that the chair raised. So if I'm uh arriving in. Uh, if I'm being driven and I have to exit a vehicle. Um, from the handicap spot. And what's that look like with? How I exit my, exit the vehicle, get into my chair? What are the radiuses, turning radiuses look like with regard to other vehicles that Mayor may not be parking at the same time?
We're showing a standard um eight-foot space plus eight-foot loading area, which is code. Uh, it gives you a total of sixteen feet. Um. That allows you to back in if you have to get out one side of the car or pulling straight. You know, it's, of course, if you, if you have issues, you could. You can use that entire space as needed to, you know, maneuver whatever you need to maneuver to to get out and. To get into the elevator. So um, th- that's that's a requirement that the first handicap spot's always required to have an eight-foot loading space. A sec- secondary spaces are required a five-foot wide loading space. So we have extra space here.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Lesko and then Mister O'Donnell. Thanks, Mister Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, my concerns echo uh some of the ones that you had uh just a moment ago. There's a ramp uh that goes down. From the outside to the inside of the covered parking. Um, it doesn't appear to be ADA accessible. Uh, Christopher or Mister Degrassia, do you know? If it is ADA accessible, if there's any improvements that could be made, um, the concern really is. I I hear what you're saying about uh people being able to coordinate with the university uh or drive their own car to get in there. Um, but the concern would be if someone is trying to go up that ramp or, you know, God forbid, there's an emergency and, you know. Someone couldn't get up that, it has thought been given to that?
So we've, we've had a lot of discussion about this. You know, this site is far from perfect, much like other, many other sites. You know, in in town. Uh, and it's also very much like many buildings on campus. Which because of buildings on on a slope, you know, there's not always perfect access, you know, for wheelchair access. And what the university does, uh, they're, you know, they're amazing. Um, as I said, I've been working for them for twenty years. They're they're amazing at providing any type of accommodation needed at whatever cost. If there's an employee and a student, graduate student uh to make that happen. And that's part of their mobility um transport system is that they, you know. Um, they will transport uh anyone on campus door to door. Uh, also, the um. Just want to point out, um. What they also do on campus a lot is what they call medical permit parking. So much like you said, if someone breaks a leg, so you know, those spaces are really designated for for visitors. Um, just like everywhere else on campus, uh, all the staff, all the graduate students have to park. In the garage and take the Tiger Transit um or or the mobility transit. The um, they assign a space. So there, uh, if you go through campus, there are certain areas that are just medical permit only. So if you break a leg. Uh, if you're pregnant, you have a problem walking, accessibility isn't just, you know, wheelchair. Um, so that's, that's how we talked about that. It would be addressed here, just like it is on many buildings on campus.
But it's just, just to follow up on on Justin's question, is there anything could be, that could be done physically? In terms of the design of the slope going um up to the garage to make it um. More accessible if there are people with mobility issues.
Yeah, we can make sure that we meet the one and twelve pitch. Um, we can't obviously put handrails because that would interfere with the traffic. So so we can make sure that we get the one and twelve pitch um so that, you know, a wheelchair or scooter, you know, could could get up it.
Great, thank you.
Where are we talking about that being made?
From the parking lot into the garage, the the built-up asphalt kind of ramp down into the garage. So it's not a true, you know, it's it's not a true handicap ramp because it doesn't have handrails, but we can, we can provide a slope which. Enables someone to get in or out.
And just to avoid confusion, we had, we had a confusion conversation already this week. When we say scooter, we don't. And just to avoid confusion, we had, we had a confusion conversation already this week. When we say scooter, we don't mean the two-wheel scooters. We're talking about the mobility scooters.
Good, thank you for that. That's, that's helpful. Does that address your question, Mr. Lesko?
Uh, I think so.
Thanks. Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Mr. Giddings just uh, answered my question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Uh, will the parking spaces be the uh, university permit restricted? The seven parking spaces in the back?
Yeah, so I I think the the seven would be for the university. My understanding is they would be for invited guests. Um, or any special needs such as the medical permit or or handicaps only.
Okay, and the other two spaces that are there are for Tiger Noodle?
Yes, correct.
So, yeah, um.
There's signs, there's signs basically would designate, these are the two Tiger Noodle, here are the university spots.
That was, that was my, the next part of my question. Thank you very much.
And, you know, remember, this is not a public entrance. You know, the the elevator would have a call button. It would have, you know, uh, restricted access, you know, that an employee card would use. So it's not like a member of the public would, you know, come to this elevator and use it. It's going to be secure.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, any other uh, questions from board members? Or, and uh, are there any other comments or issues that um, our professionals would like to bring to the board's attention? That might not have been addressed by the university, things that were in memos? I think we have gone through those things. Okay, seeing none, um, I will open up um, for public comment if there are any members of the public who wish to address the board for up to three minutes on um, with comments uh, related to this application, comments, questions, thoughts. Now is the time. So you would uh, would need to virtually raise your hand by clicking on the icon at the bottom of your screen. I'm not seeing any hands go up. We do have um, nine attendees uh, who are not panelists, but nobody is raising their hand. So with that, I will close the public comment. Um, invite uh, thoughts, deliberation, um, questions, final questions from board members? And I'm not seeing any. So um, what I've heard is, I guess I would ask Mr. Degrassia and you and your um, witnesses to respond to um, Mr. Quinn's request for more bike parking. I think it would be uh, as a condition, um, he he asked. Uh, and I'd like to know, maybe Tim, do you have a um, a number, a number of additional ums, um, bikes that you would want to be able to accommodate another five or something, another three? I mean, you said there were five uh, probably available already?
I, I think the the rack that you see um, is a, an older generation rack that was meant mostly for skinny tire bikes uh, or road bikes. And so, as the capacity appears to be six or seven, when the reality is that it's more like four or five. So I would say another rack that could accommodate five or six additional bikes in that area. I think the the advantage to that over the um, over the on-street bike parking, which you have to remember uh, between with the Spoon Grill and um, and the Tiger Noodles, uh, there's not a lot of sidewalk space uh, as you approach uh, that area. Uh, so I doubt that there's very much opportunity for uh, more bike parking on the sidewalk, if any exists. And I think, I suspect as and as a long-time rider, that anytime I can get interior bike parking, I prefer that to um, exterior. It's better for the bike, it's better for security. I think it's one, it it appeared from the photo that I saw um, that the a an additional rack could be accommodated next to the existing rack.
Um, Mr. Lamarche, do you want to comment on that? Sorry to interrupt him, but I saw-
I just have a quick question to Bill. Bill, can we add another rack? Is there space for it?
Yeah, I believe we can add another one of the same size.
Okay, I, there'll be no problem. We'll, we'll, we'll be very happy to do that.
Perfect.
Great.
I I don't, you know, because this is also, we have to run it by the the landlord. The university doesn't own this property, but I believe, and we have to make sure that the space works. Um, so I don't know if we could commit to a certain number at this point, but our intention would be to make it more efficient and add um, you know, to to sort of maximize that area for biking um, without having to go into and remove a parking space, you know, to say, you know, say something like that. So we could certainly look at it and we could have um, your staff look at it as well and see how many we can get in there, which would probably, if if our architect is correct, which would be probably another rack of that same equivalent size. So.
Okay. Um, and another thing I heard uh, was a commitment to the one-to-twelve pitch uh, from the parking lot into the covered parking. And um, and then language in the resolution that speaks to um, the o- ongoing approval, you know, with no, with what, no one-year limitation. Despite the fact, this is not technically a
Preliminary.
Preliminary, right, um, approval, so.
Yeah, I was, I was reading that as almost a bifurcated, you have a year to finalize your site plan approvals, and they use the word preliminary to kind of vest before the grant is, you know, expires, you know, that's how I was reading it. So in this particular case, um, we are requesting minor site plan approval, so we don't have preliminary and final, but it's the same factor. So it's, it's, you know, it's looking for the the time and not limiting it, because I was looking at that as an expiration. If you don't occupy the space, use the space or get your preliminary approval within a year, this, this conditional use approval evaporates.
Okay, well, and that's probably exactly right about that. I just want to make sure that um,
It's documented.
That it's, yes, that it's completely clear because I found, I found reading that paragraph.
But if you're reading that paragraph-
It was a tough read.
It's not clear. It's terrible.
Alright, um, any other-
Louise, if I'm, if I may?
Yes.
Now, you had talked earlier and I wrote it down as a potential condition, markings on the pavement indicating pedestrian and bike access to the garage, including those with mobility issues. And if we're going to do that, I would say be subject to staff review and approval.
Yeah, I guess I would ask um, um, Mr. Phillips, I mean, from your perspective as a planner, wh- what are your thoughts about about this, about how how to make sure that people with mobility issues who don't happen to be delivered in a van, you know, who might live nearby, might prefer to walk, whatever, or prefer to 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 get there other than in a van, you know, um, I'd like your thoughts about that.
I I mean, I I get the the mobility issues and the notion of uh, marking, and I'll defer to my client. The only thing I would again emphasize is, is the unique nature of this use in in the fact that it's basically uh, university employees. Uh, and the only uh, you know, you got restricted access to the elevator in the rear and you don't, you, all you have in the back is, you know, visitor parking. So it's, it's not something that's typically available to the public at large for the most part. Uh, sure, would it be a benefit to have it, but I guess in in relation to the fact that the, you know, my client's not the the property owner and has to deal with that as well, I'll defer as to whether or not those arrangements can be arranged. My only point is that I think the need for it, given the na- the unique nature of this use is is not as great as, you know, otherwise might be the case, if that makes any sense, Madam Chair.
And do we, oh, go ahead.
No, sorry. Um, you know, as an architect, we struggle with this because, like I said, this is not a perfect site. Um, there is existing park, the handicap parking back in the surface lot. So it is used that way. There's, you know, the existing cars, people are are walking and traversing that path. Um, you know, because that access way is only about seventeen feet wide and then kind of breaks into about fourteen feet wide. Yes, you could do it. It's not, you know, cars right now have to kind of stop in the right place, let someone else through. It's almost like a one-way bridge almost, you know, in some areas. So, you know, does, the question is, is does striping it make it more safe or does it give people the feeling of safety when, you know, it's it's no different? I don't have the answer for that. It's, you know, it's, it's not an increased, it's the same, similar usage to what's there now. It's not, it's not a increase in use.
Yeah, i- if there, and I guess I'll turn to our own professionals too, which maybe I should have done in the first place, but um, i- i- is there a a a standard that we have asked of other applicants or other um, property owners in town for when there is a shared driveway like this and the expectation that pedestrians and others um, mobility compromised or not, will be sharing the driveway with cars um, as they access parking behind these buildings? Is there a standard that we have for, you know, four-foot um, cross-hatched with yellow stripes or something, anything like that, that we, you know, typically require or might require that just delineates for, you know, if if there are uh, people in cars and people not in cars that are sharing the driveway, whether they're going in the same direction or not, something that says here's where the car goes, here's where everybody else goes. Is there's is there that we apply or that we can ask for here, Mr. Wiseman?
Uh, I'm not aware of any particular standards that the municipality has uh, for a situation like this. Um, on other applications, I know they've added striping. Um, where it can be accommodated, uh, should a pedestrian be using a driveway? Um, I recall in that situation, the driveway was wide enough, but it was also a one-way driveway. You didn't have alternating traffic going both ways. Um, the standard that we would hold to would be ADA standards um, as applicable uh, as this is a uh, existing feature. Um, there's uh, some gray area as to when the ADA standards would apply. Might be difficult to discuss and go in fine detail as to where they do apply here. Um, if this does go ahead, I I would suggest that uh, and staff would be happy to work with the applicant to to ADA standards applicable um, for this access, for pedestrian access. Um, yeah.
And what if, there are no ADA standards that apply? Um, do you see any room to work something out between the staff and and the university, assuming it's acceptable to the landlord um, to address the concerns that have been expressed by the chair?
Yeah, I I understand the point of creating a false sense of safety with striping, but um, you're still walking in an active driveway. I think striping would be more beneficial than none. Um, just because you have some two-way traffic coming in and off the driveway. Um, you know, I I would assume that it's very rare that you have two cars squeezing by at the same time. Um, it's probably more of like a, a sit and wait while one car comes and the other car goes. Um, so-
Yeah, definitely. And and to to me, what makes this different and and important to deal with is the fact that there are the, you know, two solid walls on either side. There's no, you know, like stepping over the curb to get out of the way kind of situation. And I don't want to, like, create a a unnecessarily high bar, and I don't want to suggest, you know, a a condition that ultimately would obligate the university to, you know, put in a rail where they can't or anything like that. So I, I I I am trying to make an accommodation without, without going too far and without being unreasonable and maybe the working it, working through it with staff is a good um, suggestion. Mr. Lesko?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I was going to agree with that and actually kind of recommend that. Um, and just point out that the surface parking lot in the rear is for small worlds, uh, the seafood restaurant or the seafood stand in Blue Wing Grill. So, you know, people do constantly walk across it. Um, and as far as I know, that there's not an issue with that uh, kind of works, so. Even with the, whether the previous tenant was in there or in its current state.
Okay. Um, are there other comments that board members have or um, professionals would like to bring to the board's attention? Any any thoughts, deliberation on be, on behalf of the board? And if not, would someone like to frame a motion?
Why, why don't I at least go over the the various components of it? So be classified and approved as a minor site plan. Additional use approval. There are checklist waivers uh, that are set forth on pages two of six of the memo by Dan and Derek. Um, and then the conditions. We've basically gone over the conditions. The only additional one is with respect to checklist waivers. Um, where the staff comment is, the applicant shall provide plans to satisfy minor site plan checklist items, D two, which is four plans, G required notice for all plans, and H required signature format on all plans. And uh, it may be the four plans have now been submitted and that's already been satisfied, but that would be the only other condition.
Okay. Uh, is there um, a motion?
I'll move approval uh, with the conditions as articulated by council.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Quinn, seconded by Councilwoman Sacks. I assume that was a second and not a comment?
That, that was a second, not a question or a, or a point.
Okay, thank you. Um, Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time on both applications.
Thanks, Mr. Degrassia. Thank you, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Giddings, Mr. Lamarche. Appreciate um, your time and testimony and look forward to your ability to move ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, how do we, how do we handle closing the meeting when David is running?
We stay.
We might.
I'll move.
Um, I, 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 other, someone else can step up just immediately.
I believe Mr. Tex Arney did, and I will second-
Oh, there you go.
I will second the motion. Second the motion made by Mr. Tex Arney.
And seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks very much.
Good night.
Bye.
Next time. Bye-bye. Good night.
Good night.